For the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, November 4th meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is additions and deletions to the agenda. I have a request from the mayor to add an additional executive session regarding a personnel matter, and I'd like to move all three executive sessions to the end of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on adding those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you have any other additions or deletions? Seeing none, we'll move on to amendment and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any additions or corrections to the minutes from the October 21st meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the board on matters not on tonight's agenda. Don't see any members of the public here to address the board, so I will move on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus.
Thank you. Good evening. First, if you'll find placed on your desk is a nomination for Ed Bove for our Planning and Zoning Administrator position. You would, if the board would take the normal, traditional path and table that until the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to table the nomination of Ed Bove as Planning and Zoning Administrator. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, and Ed wanted to come up and talk for a few minutes because he is not going to be here at the next meeting.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks. I just wanted to say a couple of things about why I'm interested in the position and everything we've done at the RRA. So, just, for me, it's about the work. It's always been about the work. I am kind of a planning nerd. I like planning and zoning, and with what I've been doing at the RRA, a lot of that has been in the planning and land use world. So, I feel with what we have ahead of us as a city, that's where the work is. It's work I love doing, and at the end of the day, that's the reason for hoping that this board would approve me to move over to being the Planning Director for the city, which is really a position the city has never had before. So, I think looking towards that is really exciting. It's something I really want to do in my hometown, which is another perk, so that's the reason behind it. I just wanted to say a couple of things of why and what is ahead of us in the Planning and Zoning Department. Most importantly is the land development regulations in the zoning, and we have to finish that. That includes flood hazard work, also some signage work that goes with that. There is the City Master Plan, which, I don't know if you can believe it, we're four years into an eight-year period to do the master plan, so that is coming up very soon. Along with that is a future land use map, which then all sort of needs to get done in order for us to apply for the Act 250 Tier 1A exemption in one year. We can actually put that application together. So, that rolls into that, along with our, the designation programs are also changing at the state level, so there's a lot of things that have to happen very quickly in the planning and zoning world. So, jumping into that and doing that work is really one of the things I'm super excited about. So, I would, can I do this? I don't know if I'm allowed to refer to, refer for a committee meeting in his time in front of the microphone.
Go ahead, Max, because then I'll stand in front of him.
Okay, so, I would actually like to refer a Planning and Zoning conversation in general to go through some of this, some of the projects and the timeline. I think it'd be in front of Community and Economic Development, so, on behalf of the mayor.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer a discussion of Planning and Zoning to the Community and Economic Development Committee. It's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And the only last thing I want to say, and sorry, I'll give you the mic back. You let me have it, so. I'm, I know I've only been at the RRA for 13 months, but I'm proud of what we accomplished in that time. We got the TIF, Letter of Intent, out the door. We just completed a Neighborhood Development Area Amendment last week, so that's very exciting. The DRP, I feel, is on solid footing again, and we actually got the Special Benefits District rate, the tax rate, to go down a little this year, so I thought that was very cool, along with the placemaking plan and then other RRA organizational stuff like a website, strategic plan, and contract with the city. So, I think it's been a successful year, and I will keep working with the RRA through this transition time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Budgets, so you should have received the budget submission from me on the first, attached with a brief executive summary. I will be getting the board a more detailed spreadsheet. Obviously, no numbers changing, but some, you know, percentage callouts, some examples and a couple of areas that we can talk about and highlight. I think it's really, you know, interesting to note those things, like what, where our insurance went up and the new taxes that we're paying, and just call those out for the board, because they are common across all departments, so it'll make the discussion a little bit easier. I'll have the updated copies to you in your emails sometime this week, and then I'll have paper copies before we start having our in-person budget committee meetings. I want to talk about our people here at City Hall for a minute, City Hall and all of our departments. I'm going to start off with the two most recent vacancies. So, I had mentioned at the last board meeting that Pete Kelly was retiring and that Andrew was stepping down from the Planning and Zoning position. The lack of presence of those two individuals today was very, very noticeable and palpable in the air. They both added great value to our city, Pete for a far longer time than Andrew, for sure. But, you know, when we, when people retire or choose to move on, they are definitely missed here because they added so much value. But, that being said, you know, the people that work here for the city, the employees that we have, it's undeniable, the cohesion and the consistency in their work. They have been, these departments are working across borders, silos have been broken down, constant communication between department heads, information's flowing, it does not need to flow through me all the time, which is great. They talk to each other, they collaborate, they work on things. There's an effort with the Police Department Building and Zoning, DPW Fire, the other day, that just went off without a hitch. Things got done, and one of those things that is a perfect example of that is the Halloween Parade. And I cannot tell you how many people came up to me and said, you know, "The Halloween Parade was amazing," but the feedback that I got about after the Halloween Parade and how clean downtown was and how quickly it got picked up and how it didn't interfere with the show at the Paramount. I mean, that's, that is just, the departments working together in lockstep, every department putting in their best, and it's all communication around City Hall. And I just, I can't appreciate how, I can't appreciate enough how well everybody works together, and the teamwork at City Hall has been absolutely amazing. With that, I want to talk a little bit about the Health and Benefits Fair. So, Ellen, our HR Director, put together the first, least that I'm aware of, Health and Benefits Fair for all of our employees here at the city. We had a great turnout for that. Would love to see more next year, but, but as far as vendors, there were 12 vendors present. All, there were representatives from each city department that showed up to talk. Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Castleton both sent volunteers for the event. The Castleton students were giving chair massages. It was a, the, the fitness, what do they call it?
Wellness?
Yeah, it was, it, what is it?
Sports medicine?
Yeah, sports medicine. Thank you, Carrie. The sports medicine team was there to give chair massages, and RSVP sent volunteers to work the greeting and the door raffles. Flu shots, biometric screenings were provided for employees. Through a registered dietitian was there as well. Payroll and Benefits Team was there, from what was Hickok and Boardman, I don't know the, AccuSure, I think is the name of their new name, was as well. So, every, all these vendors showed up, everybody provided great information. There was even a chiropractor there to talk about, you know, physical, physical back health and posture and all these different things. So, one of the things I want to kind of follow that up with is, we have great teams here, everybody's working together. Health and benefits are really important, and we do have positions open at the city, so if you're interested, we would love to see applications come in for a couple of the positions that we do have. We have some in our Police Department, we have some in our Fire Department, we have some in our DPW, so certainly open to, to looking for those awesome employees to come and join our great team here. I wanted to mention, I got an invitation from the governor to be on the State Workforce Investment Board. I've accepted that invitation, so I'll hear more about that over the next few weeks. Pretty excited to be there. You know, Rutland City has always been a workforce town, right? Very much, you know, teams of people going to work at companies like GE, back in the day, Metro Mail or Tambrands. There's definitely an amazing workforce here, and things have changed over the years as to what those jobs look like throughout our state. So, I think being connected to that and really talking to, at the state level, about what can be done to reinvest in our workforce is very timely, and I'm excited to be a part of that. Couple of events that happened. Speaking of workforce, Stafford Technical Center, Senator Peter Welch came down. GE has donated $200,000 to Stafford Technical Center specifically for workforce development through a form of a couple of robots. These are robots that GE actually pick and place machines and a few other things that GE actually uses at their facility. It was a great event, and one of the interesting things about Stafford for me is, I'm a graduate of Stafford, I saw the complete value of what it can do to launch a career, and to see one of our biggest employers reinvesting in the students that will eventually, hopefully be employed, that's a very nice cyclical thing to see in our community, and I appreciate that. Cedar held their annual meeting, absolutely amazing job. For those of you who didn't attend, it was a fantastic time. Great presentations on a different scale, so where we talk about workforce from a, you know, a labor and employment standpoint, we got to see a different side with four different startups presenting their pitches, and that was a fun time. Hanamaki Students, you know, we went and visited Hanamaki a couple of weeks ago as a delegation. Well, their students were here this past week. They leave tomorrow. If you get a chance to go say hi, try to grab them, but I think they're probably leaving bright and early, so you'd have to catch them tonight. Cape Air came for one of their annual visits to Rutland, talked about the contract. One of the interesting things that we had in the communications with them is that their essential air service between Rutland and Boston is working really well. They keep all of their flights, 97% of their flights that are not weather-related have gone. So, the only cancellations they truly have had in the past year have been weather-related, and other than that, all of their flights are going. I think that's a, really speaks to the fact that they put in the effort to make sure Rutland is a priority, and we had discussions about how that expanded service may look in the future, maybe adding a stop in New York. And I think that would be interesting, to continue our service to Boston and add stop in, you know, another location in New York someday. So, we've got some work to do to get that done through a federally funded program. There's federal hoops you have to jump through to make that happen, but it's something that we're continuing to talk about. And then today, we had a Downtown Plaza Task Force meeting to talk about Walmart vacating the space over the next three years, what's next for not just that space, but that downtown area as a whole. What are some of the creative things that we can do? We've started the ball rolling, and thank you to Alderman Davis and Alderman Gillum for being there, as well as a larger delegation of volunteers from the community. That conversation will continue. We've got some action things that came out of that, and we'll be talking about that as we move forward. Last thing on my list for tonight, Election Day is tomorrow. If you have your mail-in ballot, and you have not submitted it yet, please bring that ballot to the polls. It will make your process a lot easier for voting tomorrow. So, bring your ballot to the polls if you have not mailed it in. Do not mail your ballot in. Bring it to the polls if you have filled it out, because if you mail it in, it probably won't get here on time. So, make sure you bring it to the polls and drop it off tomorrow if you've already filled it out as well. Any questions on any of that? Wonderful. Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to consideration of special event permit requests, we have none. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up is a notice from Chief Lovett, who's unable to be here tonight. He wanted the board and the public to be aware that there will be a test of the Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Plan on Tuesday, November 12th at 8:30 a.m., and that the Fire Department will be blowing the 10 of 9 whistle as part of that test. And again, that's 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, November 12th. Next up is Assistant Zoning Administrator Alexander with a request related to an amendment of the development plan for 114 South Street. Welcome.
Good evening. This, I'm before the board today in support of an amendment to the development plan relating to 114 South Street. The landowner and prior buyer, Mr. Bonafas Kadima Muzela, is requesting to amend his submitted and approved development plan, specifically the timeline and the intended method of development. The property was originally purchased from the city for $1,000 in fall of 2018. The original timeline of 36 months was proposed with anticipation that the existing building would be able to be rehabilitated. Upon further inspection of the building after purchase, it was deemed unsavable and therefore demolished, and the construction of a new building is required, and the intended use of a single-family dwelling, which was in the approved development plan, will not change. With that, the, with the unforeseen condition of the structure, the buyer is requesting an extension to September 2025 in order to construct, construct the new single-family dwelling and follow through with the development plan. And as I'm sure you are all aware, the development plan is included as part of the purchase and sale agreement, so board approval is required to amend it. And lastly, the Building and Zoning Department is in support of the amended plan, and that's it.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up. It's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the amended development plan for 114 South Street as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the amended development plan. It has been seconded. Any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is Engineer Gillen with a request to authorize the Sewer Overflow and Stormwater Grant Agreement. This is on pages 12 to 40 of your packet. Welcome.
Hello. So, this sewer overflow and stormwater grant, we were notified of this award over a year ago after I submitted several, several projects to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund outlining the needs for CSOs, and in response, they awarded us that large ARPA grant, along with this one, for $323,000, for anything for the CSO Long-Term Control Plan, planning, design, construction, and we've got two of those projects on the list in the queue right now that we're working on, check valves and a big storage facility down at Connor Park. One thing I didn't note in the memo, but confirmed recently, that there is no match to this, which I think is always fantastic.
We like that.
So, yeah, we're just looking for authorization to move forward, of course, pending City Attorney approval.
Alderman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up. It's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation's Sewer Overflow and Stormwater Grant Agreement, pending the City Attorney's review and approval of the final draft.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign. It has been seconded. Alderman Gillum.
I just want Ted to tell people at home what CSO is, so they understand. Yeah, combined sewer overflows, so much of the city's system, sewer system collects sanitary and stormwater from the streets. It's been like that for a very, very long time. Our issue being that, you know, the system was developed decades and decades ago without a wastewater treatment plant, without pump stations, things like that. It used to go straight to creeks. Over time, we developed a wastewater plant. It's the largest in the state, but still, our system doesn't have the capacity to accept all the waste, and sometimes during heavy, heavy rain events, we have to discharge combined sewage, meaning stormwater and sanitary, to the creeks. It's a big lift to mitigate this issue, but obviously with grants like this, it'll go a long way. Thank you.
Seeing no other debate, the motion is to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Treasurer Markowski with the Treasurer's Report for the City and the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, period ending September 30th. You'll find this on pages 50 to 51 of your packet.
So, in the, in the packet tonight was the quarterly report for September 30, for the financials for both the city and the RRA, and I think you'll want to hold on to that as we go through the budget process, because it's really important. Where are we when we're looking at forecasting for next year? So, I'm just going to go quickly over some notes that I had from the report, but first of all, any questions specific to the report? I know for anybody listening, it's over 100 pages, so needle in the haystack, but if you want to ask a question, that's fine, too. I try to summarize the information for you, and I hope that's helpful. Bank account balances for the end of September, in total, all city accounts, that's capital funds, general fund accounts, special revenue funds, water and sewer capital funds, about $20, $20 million. So, not all of that is general fund, but all separated, and you have a list there of changes, and I think one of the changes this quarter is that we had received some of the borrowing proceeds for the Grove Street Culvert Project, so, working on that. The delinquent report, as of September 30, the property tax delinquency, prior year delinquency at $1.13 million. That's a little bit higher than it was last year. Of course, we closed the books, and anything from '24 is now added back, so we're working those down. We have two tax sale attorneys we're working with, and I think we've probably sent 10 or more properties. Some of those property owners haven't been noticed yet, but they're in process, so. Water and sewer, really those 90-day, over 90-day balances at $253,000, that's considerably lower than what we've been carrying in the past. That water sewer shut-off process has really, really helped with water and sewer delinquencies. We still have a couple of accounts with some high balances, but we worked that list down, so we're looking at folks who are around $1,000. So, we'll pick that up in the spring and try to keep those balances manageable, so. And Linda in the office is probably managing over 100 payment agreements, monitoring tax, water and sewer, so. But it works if you can get somebody on a schedule, so. pooled cash allocation, again, we spent quite a bit of time in our office. I report out every time that those enterprise funds just don't have the cash flow to be able to cover their expenses, but feeling, even though the balances are quite high, we really analyzed that sewer fund, what's happening. We had projects in there, delinquencies in there. I'm working with the auditors on there, on that, just going over some of the work that we did to analyze what could we be doing different. So, we might see some, are we going to have to increase fees? You'll see that in the budget, in the budget process, so. To try to get that cash so that we're covering the costs in that fund, so. Let's see. Overall, at the, the year, first quarter revenues, non-tax revenues, so those are the fees throughout city, rec fees, building permits, fees throughout, at 28% for the first quarter, so we're a little bit better than what we had projected for the first quarter. And over, in general fund I'm talking, and then expenses in the general fund at 23% for the first quarter, so a little bit lower than target and better than we were last year at the same period when I, when I looked. When we're looking at water and sewer funds, they're, they're about 25% revenue. Expenses are a little bit higher in those funds, and I think it's just a timing thing. We try to stay in on the target, but. Then parking fund is looking really good, because we haven't reflected any expenses for parking enforcement. So, until we resolve that, the budget was handled a little bit differently last year, so we'll see. It's going to be transfers from the general fund to, to the, to cover those expenses, I think. Just allocating that enforcement officer's position, so, while it might look good, it might not be good when we end the year. The revenue is much stronger with the Park Mobile, but we've also had a little drop in ticket revenue, so. Transit fund, the summer months seem to be a little bit better when we don't have snow expenses and stuff, so right now, they're, just with two months in, we're showing about $22,000 revenue over in expense for that. And the RRA, strong right now at the end of September with a cash balance of $175,000. The RRA had some surplus funds last year, so right now, we're reporting $45,000 assigned for capital projects, 49 for business development, 27 for admin reserve, and then we have $7,000 assigned for the Rail Gateway Project that the city's doing, and another $10,000 for the signage project, the new signs for the DRP, that the DRP is working on. So, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, but anytime, please come in and see me if you have questions, especially as we're getting closer to budget.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next up is Attorney LaChance with a recommendation regarding the Board of Cannabis Control. There's a memo on pages 52 to 54 of your packet.
Yes, so I have presented this memo, which I believe most of you would have seen before. There was some discussion while back, and I believe the idea was floated to potentially dissolve the Cannabis Control Board since it was effectively gutted of power by the state legislature, and there isn't a whole lot that it can do. Just presenting it here for information in case the board wanted to take action or any motion to dissolve it, or we can leave it as is, but I just wanted to bring it back up, because I know it's been a while since it was discussed, and there had been some discussion around it at that time, and this is the appropriate place to dissolve it if we are going to do so.
If I may.
Alderman Davis?
I don't have a motion, but I have a question. At the last page, you talk about the two possibilities, whether the board wants to pass the current pending cannabis license. Please note the meeting minutes must be sent to the control board. But don't we do that in the sense, we're the control board, our minutes come to us, they would be included in, in the minutes under the Cannabis Control Board? So, does a different step have to happen?
Yes, so that reference to the Cannabis Control Board is the State Cannabis Control Board.
Oh, state.
That, that was a reference to the state board, and I'm sorry if that was unclear.
That's all right.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all right. So, if I may, another question. So, I'm hesitant to just say bye-bye, and the reason I am is because tomorrow's Election Day, and we don't know what changes, if any, will occur within the state legislature, and we don't know what changes, if any, could occur to this law. So, I think I would like to just table it until we at least get through election and see then what, if any, power may come to the local municipality who is being requested to approve or disapprove these licenses.
And I think that would be appropriate. I am going to float the idea whether the board would be interested in potentially sending this to a committee for further discussion, if they would find that beneficial.
What is the board's pleasure?
I would make a motion to refer to General. I feel like that'd be the most appropriate place for this to go, to have the conversation.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this matter to the General Committee. It's been seconded. Any debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have reports. Next, we have reports of standing committees. First, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of October 21st. A copy can be found on pages 55 to 56 of your packet.
The topics were changes to the buy-up policy, creation of an emergency assistance provision in the buy-up, and the Blush Salon buy-up. The committee met Tuesday, October 22nd. Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman McClure, Alderwoman Davis. Others present were Mayor Mike Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Ed Boe from the RRA, Barbara Spalding from the RRA, Treasurer Markowski, Paige Carrera, Jamie Johnson, Jamie Watkins, Attorney LaChance, and Gordon Driscilla from the Rutland Herald. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority presented changes made to the Business Incentive Assistance Program buy-up policy, including the addition of an emergency assistance provision. The emergency assistance provision permits eligible businesses to apply for emergency assistance due to a federally declared disaster and/or a state of emergency declared by the mayor that is not covered by other programs created because of the disaster. President Talbot asked why relocation assistance provided to businesses as part of buy-up loans had been removed from the buy-up policy. The committee agreed that it was a reasonable part of the business's expenses and felt that it should be added back into the policy. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to approve the amendments to the buy-up policy, including the addition of an emergency assistance provision, and with the reinclusion of any references to relocation assistance. The motion passed three to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion to approve the amendments to the buy-up policy? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, Barbara Spalding presented the RRA's recommendations on Paige Carrera's buy-up grant. In 2020, Paige was awarded a $10,000 forgivable buy-up loan for expanding her business, Blush Salon, by moving it from 60 Center Street to 15 Center Street. When COVID hit, she had to pivot her business and instead use the $10,000 to keep her salon at 60 Center Street compliant with COVID safety measures. She managed to keep her business open, but when she began renovations on 15 Center Street, it became clear it would need far more work. The property on 15 Center Street is still not open, which was a condition of the grant. The RRA recommended a request for repayment. Paige Carrera explained that former RRA Director Duffy stated during COVID not to worry, and that they would forgive her loan if she used the money to pivot and remain open during COVID. Barbara Spalding was not involved in the buy-up loans at this time. Paige explained that she employs over 20 people in the community and that she was able to keep people employed during COVID. She asked for a little grace from the Board of Aldermen and asked for forgiveness of her loan, even though the conditions had not been fully met. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to deny the application for loan forgiveness and recommended repayment of the $10,000 buy-up loan. This motion passed two to one.
Second.
So, we need someone to move it, as Alderwoman Tadio did not move the motion, as she voted against it in committee. So-
I'm sorry?
Alderwoman Tadio didn't move the motion.
As chair, she still has to move the motion, even though she votes against it. Just have to vote for the motion as if you still have to move the motion out of committee as chair.
Are you willing to do that, Alderwoman Tadio?
If the rules dictate that I must do that, then I so move.
Seems simplest. Okay.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to deny the application for loan forgiveness and recommend repayment of the $10,000 buy-up loan. It has been seconded. Discussion or debate from the board? Alderman Heck.
I wasn't present for the meeting, but I was definitely here for COVID, and I can understand some of the complications that businesses had to adhere to in regards to those things. So, this is a difficult thing to look at, because it's one of those things that has never happened before. People tend to be able to get the money, do what they were going to do, and that's it. And I'm sure if the folks that had garnered that money and there was no COVID, they'd probably be at 15 Center Street at this point in time. So, I don't know. I'm not so sure how I feel about the request of paying it back. It seems like they looked at getting the property into a position to move into. You incur some of these buildings downtown may need a little more rehab work and stuff, and if it's feasible to move or not. So, just want to point that out. I'm not sure in regards to this motion that I will vote in favor of the denial, but I just wanted to explain to the board my reasons for it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann?
I'm just wondering if I could ask Board Member Tadio to explain a bit more about why she voted against it in committee. I also was not able to make it.
Yeah. Well, it's unfortunate that a lot of the statements made by former RRA Director Duffy are not in writing, and I would advise people always to get things in writing when those statements are made. So, it's just unfortunate that there was a transition of power during a difficult emergency time. And I am glad that the business was able to remain open because the money was spent to keep it open. So, I think I just really felt like she did what she could, and she is employing people. And so, yeah, I wanted to forgive the loan. Or I don't, I think it's probably too late procedurally to pivot, but if it's not procedurally too late, like possibly give an extension. And I don't know what your legal opinion on that is, but just, you know, extend the timeframe for her to forgive the loan would also-
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now, so we do have to act on that motion before any other motion can be made. Alderwoman McClure, and then Alderwoman Davis.
With all due respect to Alderwoman Tadio, as she prepared these minutes, what these minutes neglect to mention is the applicant did mention that she had opened more than one business during this time after this loan had already been granted. And I feel that that is just a very important piece of perspective to consider when someone is asking us to forgive a $10,000 loan in which they do not meet the conditions for forgiveness.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, I really have no dogness, so I don't think any of us do. But I reached out to the RRA to just get some additional information after the meeting. Unfortunately, there is no documentation of Mr. Duffy meeting or having any conversation with Ms. Carrera. Also, if you recall, we gave out loans during COVID. Those loans were not forgivable. They were paid back. We also, I asked the timeframe, and it was shared by Barbara that the RRA had reached out to Ms. Carrera for over a year to have a conversation, to say you haven't met the criteria that you signed on for. You know, there's an agreement that you sign on for, and there is no response, so I was told. So, it's not our rule, it's the double RA rule. The double RA says you have, this is what you need to do, or you need to come back and speak with us, or you need to provide this or that, and there's an opportunity. But none of that happened. And that's unfortunate, but it didn't happen. And there are groups of people who have applied and been awarded buy-up loans who have done the right thing. So, I think that's, you know, when I said we're in a rock and a hard place, I meant that. But the rules are not ours, they're the double RA. It's our responsibility to support them or not to, if you so choose.
Alderwoman Savage?
And my question probably is for Attorney LaChance, because it's contractual. It's a contract that's held with the double RA, and it can't be amended outside just by an oral contract. It's, so don't we have to abide by-
That would, for any amendment or discussion in terms of, as Alderwoman Tadio proposed of an extension, that would have to be a discussion with the RRA and whether they're willing to do that, as that is a contract between that individual and the RRA.
Paige Carrera is here, and I'd like to give her the opportunity to speak.
Hi, everyone. I just wrote something, just because I wanted to make sure all of my, I think my last meeting, I wasn't able to articulate everything that I wanted to say. And I guess I'm just going to start it off with saying, instead of being shamed on the front page of the Rutland Herald, I'd like to be recognized as a young woman that pivoted during a global pandemic and stayed in business. When I was first given this forgivable loan, it was during, it was during a time when the entire world had shut down. I was handed a check with face masks on in the parking lot. And saying I had to pivot would be an understatement. I so badly wanted to open a cosmetology school, but knowing that I want, but knowing that I wanted something like this to thrive, it was going to, it wasn't going to be feasible with having to be six feet apart. So, I did what I knew how to do best. As a young businesswoman, I pivoted, and I did everything I could to keep Blush in business. I reached out to Brennan, and he told me it was fine. We would redo the paperwork, which we did and is on record. The one thing I didn't do, and the reason the RRA decided to, one, to vote against me, was I did not move to 15 Center Street. However, I did meet all of the other requirements. For this forgivable loan, I kept all of my employees. I doubled my staff in size. I expanded to a new location, which was not at 15 Center Street, but at 73 Center Street. This was a choice I had to make, because 73 Center Street was financially an easier building to rehab, and I was able to do it with a quicker turnaround. During this time, I simultaneously worked with the state of Vermont, and I was able to embed a cosmetology school within my salon, where I wrote three separate curriculums for the state. This is where young women and men can come and get their full education and license through cosmetology, aesthetics, or nail technology. I was able to do this program for some, partially funded, and for others, fully funded through the state of Vermont, making it an option to not only get educated in Rutland, but with this new licensure, be employed in Rutland. This is a huge win for our community, and not only is this grant available for Rutland, but the entire state. And with a lot of hard work, we were able to get this grant for anyone who wants to be educated in a non-traditional school in the state of Vermont, not just a win for our community, but a win for our entire state. And it keeps my dream of being able to be an educator and having a school alive in our community. I understand that I didn't, I didn't meet the expectations by moving 15 Center Street, but I was able to rent 15 Center Street out actually this week to a local business, and to expand 73 Center Street to, and I was able to expand to 73 Center Street, start a school, keep my business afloat, double my staff, and keep the staff that I did have employed, all during a global pandemic. Blush will continue to serve hundreds of clients each week. We will also still be in business. We will also still be a business that promotes people to come to downtown Rutland, not only to support Blush, but to stay and eat, shop, play here, right in downtown Rutland. Please know how much I appreciate this loan and its ability to keep my business open during a pandemic. I ask for a little grace and consideration on forgiving this loan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate from the board, or any questions? Alderman McCann?
Yeah, this is a sort of a tough thing to consider. And I don't want to be one to throw rules out the window if there was a contractual component that said that it had to move. But on the other hand, you know, we are small enough to, I think, really consider what the intent is of this program. And if the, as was just described, if the only thing that wasn't met was sort of moving locations, but otherwise, we still have a successful business that has grown, that employs people, provides services, and actually provides an amenity in terms of an educational component that otherwise wouldn't be here, that seems like a win for the community. And if we have that capacity to make a decision to forgive this loan, it still seems like it's a win for downtown Rutland. And I think that I will probably voting against the denial.
Any additional discussion from the board? Alderwoman Savage?
So, if there's a business in it now, were any renovations had to be made for the business that's in 15 Center Street now?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Did you have to make any renovations to have the business move into, that's occupying that space now?
Yes, we've had to do many renovations, whether it was taking down the drop ceiling, pulling up the floor, and taking all the plaster off of the brick walls and exposing them. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but please know that was a lot of renovations and a lot of hard work, and a lot of work that I did physically with my own hands. And it's, still has some to go. We are still working on it, but the best-case scenario was that I had a local businesswoman reach out and wanting to rent the space, and we're going to work in conjunction together to get that space open for her business. That's, I don't want to say what business it is, but it's already currently downtown, and she's going to be expanding within Center Street.
Alderwoman McClure?
Do we have a timeline for that projected expansion and a cost estimate for what that will end up incurring?
Yeah, so-
Who will incur that cost? Would that be you, or would that be the tenant?
So, we will be taking those costs and sharing them together. Right now, we're getting estimates, seeing how she, we just came to this agreement this week. We're getting estimates, and we're going and moving forward in the right direction, which I think is what everyone wants.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, I think, I think this discussion is better served back before the double RA, who sets the rules and has the regulations. And I, excuse me, I know there's a motion on the floor to deny, but I would like to move to refer this issue back to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority to meet with Paige Carrera to see whether or not, with the property now being rented, and some renovations occurring in 15 Center Street, if they feel that this is meeting the criteria, and then they could make a recommendation back to this board as needed.
Well, I think first, we would have to act on the motion that's on the floor, or dispose of it.
Does the motion refer to-
I will pull my motion back.
Okay. I mean, if Alderwoman Tadio and the secondor are willing to withdraw their motion to-
It is withdrawn.
Okay.
So, I just feel that we're acting on their behalf, on their recommendation. So, if there's a question or concern, then let's put it back to the double RA to have that discussion. We all received an email from Ed Clark as to what the RRA's position was. But I mean, I'm willing to hear more from an opportunity that they may, may see that is present.
Point of order?
Yeah, Alderman Gillum.
Can the committee chair pull that motion back after she's made the report and put it on the floor?
Sure.
Is this motion supersede that? That's a ruling I need.
So, as far as I am aware, the motion can be withdrawn as long as there is the approval of the secondor on that.
That would be my take as well.
And I think the motion to refer takes precedence.
This clear, because it is a committee report.
Mm-hmm. Alderwoman McClure?
I just have a question for Ms. Carrera, if I may. Ms. Carrera, do we have, do you have a copy of that lease? Do we know the terms of that lease, the, how long they would be planning to rent that unit? And is the proof of cost incurred being shared evidence in that lease, and can that be presented to the RRA? That's a multi-part question.
Yes, we can work, if there's something that you are looking for, I would be happy for you to send that to me, and then work with the tenant to make sure that all of your needs are met.
Perfect. Specifically, if I may, specifically, what I'm seeking is the length of the lease. Is this a month-to-month lease? Is this a multi-year lease? That, that's my big question. As you've said yourself, there is a lot of work that needs to go back into this space. And if the tenant is incurring the cost with you, I would like to see, I'm not, I know I am not speaking on behalf of the double RA here, but I would like to see the tenant's commitment to that space and ensuring that it is brought up to where we thought it would be at this point.
Absolutely. I would love for you to send me exactly what you guys are looking for, and what's best, that you feel suited for Rutland City. And then we can meet with the tenant and make sure that we can meet the needs of both you and the tenant.
So, if this is in fact referred back to the RRA, you could send those to me as the board's representative, and I'll put them in front of the RRA staff and board chair.
Thank you, President Talbot.
So, any, so we have a referral motion. It was not seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. So, we have a motion to refer this matter back to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority for further consideration. It's been seconded. Debate on that referral. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 5:50, 5:00 PM.
Very good. Next, we have Alderman Whitcomb with a report from the Finance Committee meeting of October 29th. This was placed on your desk.
Thank you, President Talbot. Yes, it should have been placed on your desk. So, the Finance Committee met on October 29th, 2024. On the agenda, we had the JCI Contract and Financing Discussion. And as a sub-point to that, the Georgia Ede Chiller Replacement Financing. The other item on the agenda was a contribution amount to pension fund from the local option tax. The committee members were myself, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Savage, Alderman Barbara Gallo, and Alderman Adams, who started on the phone but finished in person. Others present were President Talbot, Mayor Dungus, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Tadio, Alderman Heck, Representative Clifford, Treasurer Markowski, Recreation Director Kim Peters, Attorney LaChance, Gordon Driscilla from the Herald, and Dean, who I forgot his last name, from JCI. The Finance Committee meeting began at 5:30 PM. The committee first addressed the contribution amount to the pension fund from the local option tax. Treasurer Markowski provided the committee with a handout. Please see your attachment. It is the second page in front of each of you. They depicted the city's current contribution schedule as well as schedules based on the additional contribution amounts of $75,000, $87,500, and $125,000 per quarter. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to raise the total contribution amount from the local option tax to the pension fund to a half million dollars annually or $125,000 quarterly. The motion- The motion passed five to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Discussion or debate on the motion. So just to reiterate, um, the motion is to raise the total contribution amount from the local option tax to the pension fund to $500,000 annually or $125,000 quarterly. Alderman Heck?
I'm going to abstain, as I will be a pension recipient here somewhere down the road.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman McCann?
Uh, so looking at the tables here, the idea would be that this would get us essentially fully funded by, uh, 2044 for the pension. Uh, that gives us plenty of time to decide and make changes later, but I mean, it's not end up being indefinite. It would be until we reached that fully funded status, or does it, would it do afterwards to stay funded? Does that make sense?
If I may, I think there was some discussion too, that the amount that we put in now via the budget is a million and going to be a million plus, that it will allow us to, to decrease that amount, so there's be less impact on the taxpayers through the budget process.
Gotcha, okay. Any further discussion, debate, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention. Motion passes.
Awesome. Second item that the committee addressed was the Georgia Eti Chiller replacement financing. Recreation Director Peters opened the discussion by reviewing the timeline of events related to the Chiller project. This was followed by discussion related to options for financing the Georgia Eti Chiller replacement, and if the project should or could be included within the scope of the work performed by JCI. Alderwoman Barbogallo inquired if there was an option to utilize money from the Georgia Eti fund to put toward this project. It was discussed that these funds would be best used in a supplemental manner. There was a great deal of discussion related to how adding the Georgia Eti Chiller project would impact the potential cost savings through energy savings and weatherization. Attorney LaChance noted that addressing the Georgia Eti Chiller as soon as possible would serve to mitigate the risk and expense of a Chiller failure, which could potentially incur additional environmental costs in addition to replacement costs. No specific action was taken on the Georgia Eti Chiller project, and the consensus reflected that the option of adding the project to the scope of work for the larger Johnson Controls project is possible. An environmental sustainability meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 7th, to discuss the addition of the Georgia Eti Chiller project to the larger Johnson Controls, uh, lead project. The next item up, the committee discussed the financing options for the base project, uh, the base project which would Johnson Controls will be leading, which shows approximately $4.9 million. Treasurer Markowski recommended the bid provided by TD Bank. Please see your attachment. It's the third page. Alderwoman Barbogallo made a motion to accept the financing option presented by TD Bank. The motion passed five to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion. It has been seconded. Discussion or debate on the motion. Alderman Gillum?
Just so you know, the, the city clerk, or, excuse me, the city treasurer did put this up, the bid, and it was a good amount of banks who bid on it, so it was done properly, and, um, she got the best deal she could with TD Bank. Thank you very much.
Very good. Alderman McCann?
Yeah, uh, when this project was first pitched, there was sort of a, a teaser that the initial assumptions in the projection of costs and, and lifetime costs could potentially be reduced based on getting a better, uh, loan rate, and I'm wondering it, how this, uh, that we're voting on now compares to what was initially modeled in the, the costs over time. Don't know if anybody here has that off the top of their head.
Alderman Tadio?
Yep. Um, the initial interest rate that, um, Johnson Controls had, uh, projected for was 4.25% and this came in at 3.92%. So Mary got us a much better deal.
Great.
So it is going to be favorable for us.
Perfect. Very good. Any additional discussion or debate? The motion is to accept the financing option proposed by TD Bank for the JCI project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the meeting adjourned at 7:02 PM.
All right. Next, we have Alderman Gillum with a report from the Public Works Committee meeting of October 30th. This was emailed and placed on some folks' desks.
I have an extra copy. My, my apologies for, that's, that's all one report.
Oh, it is.
My apologies not getting everybody a copy, but I figured that folks who had laptops would have it, so folks who didn't, I got paper for them. Uh, we had a meeting October the 30th, um, Public Works Committee, members present, Barbogallo and Gillum, to achieve a quan, President Talbot. Others present was the city treasurer, city engineer, commissioner of public works, Representative Paul Clifford, RRA Director Ed Bove, and Gordon from the Rutland Herald. Meeting was called 5:30.
And me.
Did I miss you?
You did.
Oh. Adam, I'm very sorry.
It's quite all right.
That's why I had other members present, but I missed. Okay, so the record would show that Ms. Alderwoman Davis was at the meeting. Okay, we had three items on the, on the agenda. The first item is water, um, D, DP, uh, DBP issue, uh, the water plant and system DP issue. The city engineer updated the committee on advice from the state, and the city applied for the EPA program, and federal agency did more study and testing, coming up with three alternatives. He says there's pros and cons to each one of the proposals. For the taxpayers at home, we are having two informational meetings coming up November the 13th at 6 o'clock, November the 20th at 7:00 PM at the Rutland Recreation Center, and there will be more discussion at that, uh, those two meetings. There'll be a panel to discuss the, um, proposals that they found in the document that's attached. The first option was building, um, a charcoal filter, filtration for 9.5 million with $352,000 a year for operations. Uh, option two, to install a filter system, and there's a huge name with here, which is 5.6 million to build and 375, 327,000 for, um, yearly maintenance. And the third option is the, using a chemical, uh, byproducts, uh, to produce less byproducts, that will be 541,000, and the actual operating cost will be 18,000. So all those issues will be discussed at the public hearing, and this issue remains in committee. Item two, municipal water study. City engineer and the public works commissioner updated the committee on what is needed to achieve the study. The study is what is needed to improve the water, municipal water system and develop a plan. A, to prioritize the old pipes, which is, a few of them still out there, 100 years old that we need to deal with. Uh, B, would to, uh, fix dead end to a loop system to achieve a better pressure for fire protection in homes and keep the lines from standing water. Uh, C, to report the capacity of the present system and what is needed for allotments for the future growth projects, which you all know we have some projects coming up, so we need to include those in that plan. And what is need to loop the municipal water service to Rutland Town Fire Districts on the Town Line Gleason Road area. We need to also, um, do some research there. There will also be an estimate cost for engineering and construction for the water plan, and what is the timeline to complete and stay in compliance with the state of Vermont and US agencies, uh, federal government agencies. This issue also does, is staying in committee, and we will be doing some more information. This was information only, and there was no action taken. And three, graffiti on public assets update. The Commissioner of Public Works updated the committee on a joint graffiti task group, which is Department of Rec, Public Works Committee, uh, Public Works, Department of Public Works, Fire and Police Department, and community volunteers. The commissioner recommended that the group has achieved a cleanup goals showing great improvement in the city. The group also has a monthly project list to fight the graffiti based on, uh, needs, and the group, uh, excuse me, do, 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 all departments are, have been kind and have been kind of, kind of in a stretch thin process, so they'll be doing the time as they deal with it head-on. It's kind of new, that all these departments are working on this, and it seems to be working very well. The commissioner, um, is pretty impressed on what they have done so far. Um, you probably saw some projects have been done already, uh, underneath the bike path under the bridge, the railroad trussel on West Street, that's been all painted over. We are doing some other projects around town, the, uh, boxes, the traffic boxes and things like that are being painted over. So this is a, uh, task force that's going to continue to use that same process and work together to deal with graffiti issues. The committee adjourned, there's no action taken on that. Uh, the committee adjourned at 5:25.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum.
Also, I wanted to tell people, um, attached to the report for you folks is the layout of all the, um, recommendations for the water fil- filtration, uh, facility. Um, there's one, two, three, there's all listed on, uh, numbers and everything on there, and where, how they came up with the numbers. I suggest you bring this with the public hearing, so you have the documents with you, and that's what they're going to be talking about. So that's the end of our report.
Alderman McClure?
Just to speak on Alderman Gillum's report as well, Project Vision is another avenue in which people are communicating these concerns for graffiti, and speaking as the representative to Project Vision. If anybody has any both public or private property locations where there is graffiti, do not hesitate to let me know. Please send me an email, send a message to the Project Vision Facebook page, make us aware, and we will go ahead and add that to that discussed master spreadsheet and get that on the docket for folks.
Thank you, Alderman McClure. Alderman Barbogallo?
Uh, one thing that wasn't mentioned, uh, is hopefully PEG TV is going to broadcast at least one of these public hearings for the public who cannot attend, so they'll be able to watch it on TV at home.
Very good. We'll make sure we reach out to them and ask them to do so.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of select committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman McCann, and then Alderwoman McClure?
Yeah, thinking about the discussion that we just had regarding the graffiti, I'm wondering if that's an item that could be added to the report of concern list of items? I don't think that graffiti is currently an option on there. I don't know who's got, uh, control over that app at this point, but that might be an easy enough thing to add to the list, and then we can get those on the map, uh, through that method as well.
The mayor seems to be indicating affirmative. Alderman McClure?
Um, well, this is significantly less serious. I would be in the wrong if I did not subject Alderman Whitcomb to the same treatment many of us have had. Happy belated birthday, Alderman Whitcomb. Um, Alderman Whitcomb had a birthday over the weekend. He was just a couple hours short of it being on a Monday, and he has not spared the embarrassment that any of us had, that have had it fall on a Monday had to receive, so.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Matt.
Happy birthday.
The additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. If not, I'll ask the attorney to read the motions necessary for us to go into the first of our three executive sessions.
Uh, yes, and let me just figure out which order that we have them in here. Um, yes, so the first, and I'm going to pass around the documentation that should have been received in all of your emails, just so you have that, but I am looking for a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation to which the city as a party could, would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such pending litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
Second.